Steve Bender and then Tony Alisa. Should have put the five minute rule in the paper. Oh, sorry, we just changed it to two. I expected that. Honorable Mayor McKee, city councillors, other concerned citizens, and the press. My name is Steve Bender, I'm a former city councillor and a concerned resident of Revelstoke. I support, regardless of what it says in some of the paper articles, all highly rated development at Revelstoke Crossing and anywhere else in Revelstoke. If you don't move ahead, you move back. I support with reservations a mall at Revelstoke Crossing, however, I do not support the use changes in zoning the developer demands for this project. I also implore council to use all its due diligence tools to properly consider this project. It seems apparent that the legal document, the official community plan, is being somewhat ignored. In effect, changing the community use for that mall, zoning is correct, we know that, for the use, it creates a contradiction in the OCP. What in effect it does is open the way for a mall, but at the same time it will remain saying, "Protect the downtown." So you've got an official document that you're going to have to wrestle with now because you're creating a contradiction in. It seems apparent that an impact study, which should be a must in this particular project, is not being considered, not being considered for such an important and pivotal decision that will affect Revelstoke forever. I'm disappointed that Mayor McKee's response to the question, "Will at the very least a community vote be held?", the purpose of which would be to give all citizens a say in this particular matter and fairly help to heal a large rift that is dividing neighbours over this heated issue. The answer to this point is no. I would like to see that change. Glenn O'Reilly, who's with us, he may be speaking later, has penned the definitive sentence in this debate, the definitive sentence that cannot be denied. You cannot let developers design your city. That one line carves through mountains of rank very quickly. Council says a vote will be held for third reading immediately after tonight's public meeting. I'm not sure I quite understand. Usually in the past, such a vote is held at the next council meeting. I ask, "What is the hurry?". Now, the answer's probably going to be, "We don't want the councillors to have undue pressure on them between now and then, so we'll just, we'll remove the, we'll remove the space up completely, so there won't be..." But, you know, councillors usually just tell, "Sorry, you can't talk about this unless anybody that approaches you say, 'I can't discuss that with you'". And that's the end of it. Give it a little more thought. Councillors, please spend a little more time to fully consider eight, to consider this landmark decision. I think you are creating a legacy you really don't want. Thank you. Thanks to you. Tony Alisa.
Good evening. I thought by my speech I had a stroke, I'm going to try my best to make myself understand.
You're good.
Thank you. I came to Revelstoke only as a kid, sixteen years old. I'm seventeen today. So have you heard enough stories from this guy to the other guy who's got up, who's got down, and supported someone? Nobody never had their guts to really stick their head out, they say, "Let's make it this town Revelstoke a proper sacred town." They took anybody, everybody. You're a businessman, come on, I'm bored. You've done done, you don't do it to get it. Nobody supported, never got the charisma to attract customers, to know how to do it, how to run a business. No, you should open the door. Somebody open the door. Door at the highway, that's better than you. That man is got the capacity, he's got the guts to go out there and shop by a pickup. Not the same player all the time, just half a century player. You don't want me long time, and always the same people. This has got to happen. That's a big story. That's a builder's space. Everybody's at the one and two time go out, everybody talking about. I was a young guy, daddy, when the Revelstoke pedal, even a young guy, monte pedro, that are in people, or talking about Revelstoke, or talking to them, even though I'm a good a maga, they're all, all boy. That's a, 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 that's[447.24]
I live at 320 Second Street East. And I just want to come out and say I strongly oppose these zoning amendments.
Louder.
I want to say I strongly oppose these zoning amendments. We cannot be short sighted when we have, when we're presented with a decision of this magnitude. You know, to deny that there might be some benefits, especially at the start, would be crazy. We will no doubt see a short-lived economic bump during the construction phase of this project. However, there's been no commitment to use local construction or services during the proposed build-up, meaning that contractors from out of town will more than likely be used as we've seen in many other developments in town, including what's going on in the highway right now. This means that the proposed construction costs will never really enter the Revelstoke economy. President Hall has stated that the proposed proposal will decrease retail outflow and increase the tourists that pass by the Trans-Tana Highway. And I fail to see how this will happen when we're clearly looking at a duplication of existing retail services that are saturated. We have a saturated pharmacy and a saturated grocery situation in town. And I don't know the last time anybody else walked in, but we've got so many restaurants you can't throw a steak at. It's unbelievable for a town of our size. I mean, like it or not, Coopers and Southside are easily equipped to handle the town, as are the pharmacies. Not to mention the liquor stores. Nobody's complaining we don't have enough liquor stores in town. Last count is like one for every 1,200 people. We may see marginal increases in product selection, and we might even see temporary drops in prices. But these are all short-lived when a new competitor comes into a fixed or locked market in order to gain access. A lot of these tactics actually over time are reversed and they go up as the other competitors are put up. So in the end, I don't think we'll see more competition. We'll just see the same amount of competition, but with different banners as others fall off. Developments that are driven by private capital are not for the welfare of the communities or the cities they're built in. And that's okay, and that's honest. But it's our job to make sure that these developments are fitting with what we as a community or society want and value. The retail strategy in their proposal, and they butchered it. They took little pieces of it, and they took it great out of context in their proposals to the city. Mick Luthusik, who wrote that report, and he subliminally wrote a small kind of report that you can find probably in your package, and it was in the Time Reviews that "It appears that neither the developer nor the city has fully completed its due diligence to objectively evaluate the impacts, both positively negative, social and economic, of this subject-planned Trans-Tana Highway shopping center." He also said, "Both are relying on significantly outdated information, and the developer has taken facts and figures from Trex 2006 Retail Strategy out of context and misinterpreted." That's from the author of the report. And he has read their proposal, and he authored the original report. And this was all said to support the developer, and that's all that was given. We all live in Revelstoke through the lifestyle and not the shopping. This quality of life, it comes at a price, and the cost of admission is not having the same shopping options as larger centers like Sabanard, Vernon, or Colonna. We can have a mall, or we can have a strong downtown town. But we can't have them both when the incumbent is going to be a revisit of these saturated retail sectors. Something will have to give. It's funny that the number of components for this mall or this development have lived through their entire lives with the terrible lack of a mall, yet they haven't moved. I think we really need to remind that this is not a matter of being open for business. It's a matter of are we open to predatory self-interests? We can dictate our own destiny here. People don't move here for our retail options. And if that was the case, growing a community would be as simple as just keep building stuff. Retail does not dictate population growth. It follows it. Putting extra businesses and a mall in town will not create this mythical population bump. We have an amazing opportunity to build something there. It's a piece of land that exists nor else in D.C. We could put a welcome plaza. We could put a lunchhouse. We could put a conference center. I mean, it doesn't take too long to get creative to think of something that's better than a mall full of national chains. A place where a visitor could count. They could have their meetings. They could have conferences. They could go skiing. Let's take a step back and at least prepare, you know, reasonable market and feasibility studies to show that this is in fact, as professed by the developer, a good thing for us. We can do this before we have a zoning amendment that we can't raise. Thank you very much for your time, Tom.
Christina Welch and then Glenn O'Reilly.
Okay, can anyone hear me okay?
No.
No, too. Okay. Hello, I want to start off by thanking council and staff. There's been a huge amount of work that has gotten us to the point. Thank you also to everyone for showing up and participating in the process. My name is Christina Welch. I'm a researcher by day and a chicken herder by morning. I study small-town communities and economic development, and specifically look at how women contribute to diverse local economies. And both my personal and professional life, I have a vested interest in seeing development underway in small towns. Rather than sharing my own words with you, I'm going to read from a report that was submitted to council today. The report comes from Trex, a consulting company that did the 2006 retail strategy. In 2006. In addition to doing the retail strategy, Trex also did the market study and commercial master plan for Kicking Hell Horse Mountain Resort, the retail strategy for Squamish, and retail ability assessments for a number of ski resorts, including Whistler, Big White, Mount Washington, and Froni. I think we will agree that Mick has a wealth of expertise in this area. The remaining comments are taken directly from the report. Both the developer and city officials are relying upon significantly outdated information, much of which is contained in the last retail strategy prepared for the city. Developers taking facts and figures out of context and not revealing all the information. In order to make informed decisions and help ensure their existing commercial tax base is not a worry, additional spending is typically commissioned by the municipalities. When faced with commercial developments in their communities, either within their downtowns or peripheral developments, municipalities also request an assessment of the economic impact on existing businesses and to the overall community. This is especially important, or the case, excuse me, where the planned developments are comprised of mass merchandisers and larger format stores than what currently exists in their communities. Without understanding the current and projected expenditure potential within the area and for visitors to the community, there can be significant financial implications to the existing merchants. This is particularly relevant as the 2006 retail strategy revealed that most retail categories were oversupplied to serve the city residents for the period between 2006 to 2016. If there are insufficient expenditures for both resident and visitor markets, then large format stores have arisen impacting businesses of existing smaller stores by drawing patrons to their larger formats, greater selection, and cheaper prices. Thus, the existing merchants may flounder and eventually go out of business, resulting in vacancies in the downtown. With a lesser quality merchant mix, more vacancies, and a stronger commercial mix at competing developments, downtowns can rapidly deteriorate. Kevin Hannah's article, named "Sustainable Community Development" that was included in submissions to Mayor and Council is a good synopsis of what purple developments can do to not only a downtown, but to a social capital, often resulting in other non-economic impacts such as youth arrest, health problems, crime, and human economic hardships. Hannah cites that Merritt ranked it in the top 10 worst communities in D.C., and a lot of it is related to peripheral development and the declining downtown environment. Hannah's article states that "The town now remains an image of decline, poor building maintenance, and empty streets." Trex 2006 Retail Strategy also provides a series of pitfalls to avoid based on examination of other resort towns and communities. Three lessons are worth repeating here. Number one, containment versus retail sprawl translates to a better experience management. Number two, be careful not to overbuild to avoid canmore and froni examples of increased vacancies. And number three, big box and mass merchandisers can severely impact local merchants. These lessons are summarized in the 2006 Retail Strategy, where it's important to encompass the whom, what, where, and why behind the placement of commercial tenants. Downtown Revelstoke has a strong sense of place that city stakeholders have worked hard to achieve through its past efforts. Thus, it's a real jewel of D.C.'s smaller towns and holds an even stronger potential to capture the higher paying destination tours than other highway oriented shopping centers so prevalent in most smaller towns across D.C. The case studies by Kevin Hannah, Ann Dale, and Chris Ling highlight the importance of the quality of place and how encouraging peripheral development results in declining downtown with a multitude of social and economic impacts. In the city's ISCP, Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, one of the key strategies in the group is to encourage a compact and connected community, which a highly located shopping center anchored by competing and large drugstore anchors will gradually dissolve. Contrary to the recommendations, the proposed shopping center will decrease the diversity of downtown. I'll just quickly move here to the summary points. Based on the information that the developer and the city officials are relying upon, including the 2006 retail strategy, the 2015 Business Retention and Expansion Survey, and other information in the package provided by the city, the subject highway shopping center would not contribute to economic growth and stability and improve the quality of life in the community. Thank you.
Glenn O'Reilly and then Rob Lamont. Rob, can you have the microphone brought down to you? Want a wheelchair, Rob, now?
Okay, I need to walk. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Speak up.
As close as you can. My name is Glenn O'Reilly. I live 170 Dr. Street East. For the record, I am opposed to the zoning amendment by law 2088. For the record also, I am a business owner. I do not own a business in downtown. And if I played my cards right and marketed myself, I'd actually make money on this. I can sell my services to the developer and to the retailer. I'm not looking into that because I am opposed to this development. I've been saying this in the meeting. I'm opposed. I'm not opposed to development. I'm opposed to development on this site. We have to ask ourselves, where do we want to be in 25 years? Are we going to be a resort town? Are we still going to be a tourist town? So if we're going to be a resort town, we're not going to get there by building a strip mall and four-acre parking lot. I did the math this morning. The parking lot is four acres. The site is seven and a half acres. What are we getting? We're getting a cookie cutter strip mall with retail buildings surrounding it, turning their back on the highway and turning their back on the town. This project is not site-specific. I'm not going to sit here and we've all heard how this isn't going to work for us. So what do we need? We need a smaller retail area, and we need hotels. I've looked at this site up and down and sideways for the last month. So what we need is a welcome plaza with a few retail areas, a small visitor center kiosk that doesn't attract people away from the visitor center in town, enough that people directly protect town, and then hotels beside that. We need it. I understand completely, and I agree. We need a presence on the highway. We don't have that. This is not a presence on the highway. Like I said, this is turning against the back of the highway. So a small welcome plaza that attracts attention, hotels for travelers and guests, that's what we need. So how do we get there? We have a developer who, if he's listening, knows that we want to do something. If he's willing to accommodate us, we'd be willing to work with you. I spoke with a developer at the open house, and actually what I got was this is the plan they want to stick to, which is unfortunate. So hopefully, we can vote this down, go back to the drawing board, and come to something we need. So with that said, we have. And we build site-specific. We build island retail areas that look out over the town and look back towards the highway. So visitors coming down see store parts, not backs to stores. There's no land in town. I keep hearing there's no land in town to build other retail areas. I identified a two-acre parcel with councillor's jewels this afternoon under everybody's noses right downtown. This is a matter of getting the owner and developer in a room together and seeing what they can come up with. Population growth. Well, building a strip mall isn't going to grow population. All that's going to do is create employment for people who are getting minimum wage who can't find housing as a kid. This is not being visionary. This is being reactionary. So Revelstoke, we have a commitment to be visionary. So let's do that. Let's take this prime location, which is rare. If we have this, the waste of some of this project would be a tragedy. So let's take what we have, come together, and come up with a land and works. Like I said, small welcome plaza, hotels, and all this is going to take time. I realize this isn't going to happen overnight. This is going to be a long-term, 15-year project. So we start this small welcome plaza, work from there. So just in closing, Mr. [inaudible]. You were involved with the revitalization. You were one of the key players in that. So I mean, they must feel really good to walk in and guarantee you that you were involved in coming up with this. So the downtown we're trying to save right now, that's your legacy. So if this gets built, and since Pat Bayton became mayor, which only attracted the highway, or worse, is success, and it draws people from the downtown. Do you want that to be your legacy? Do any of you want that to be your legacy?
Rob Lamont and then Neil Jones.
Hello. Hello, my name is Rob Lamont. I live in 1442 Ellis Island Road. I too am pro-development. Just not this particular. Everything else fine. The thing that I see happening here in town, and I tell you, I loved, I came here in 1979. I fell in love with this town, and I, just like everybody else that's here, here for a reason. We like this town, right? Okay, but what I hate seeing happen now is what's happening over this particular issue. I see friends fighting over things, and I don't understand why we're fighting about this. I mean, I can understand why Mr. Hall is fighting. I mean, there's a wealthy man that needs more money. I get it. I can understand why the people that are saying, "Oh, man, there's going to be competition. It's wonderful. I'm going to get cheaper groceries, and it's going to be just a wonderful utopia. That's all I need." They're fighting for that, but that's not going to happen. That'll never happen. This competition, you say, "Well, competition's going to drive the prices down." We know we're getting a new gas station in town, right? Does anybody here really believe that one more gas station, the price of gas is going down? So, and also, other issues that I hear people talking about is, "Well, our taxes are going to go down because we've got more people who pay the taxes." George, I'm sorry, but that's not how it works. It doesn't work that way. And I'm sorry, Gary, I don't know any eight-floor hotel room across the street. I don't see one. I understand that. I understand that those are things we are worried about. But I hate the fact that we're all fighting about it. So I just have to ask individual councillors, possibly, what are you fighting for? Like, Gary, what are you fighting for here? You want to get all the information. You want to make a great decision for the town. And that's why we elected you, because we know that you are a caring, wonderful person. The data all shows that this is a terrible, terrible thing for this town. The people don't want it. The donors say, "Well, hey, if you don't want it, I'm not going to build it." Horseshit. We know that's not true. As authorities, look at the data. Understand your constituents that we don't want this. There are some people that do. And granted, welcome there. They're wanting this. But this is a wrong development. It's the wrong place, and I don't want my friends fighting anymore. And I certainly want to be able to have my friends order Chinese food from wherever they are.
Neil Jones and then Kai Vogel.
Thank you, Council. How's it going? You okay? I'm good.
Good morning.
Okay, no worries. So I did plan on speaking this evening, but I feel I have to. I came to Revelstoke. I already lived in it. It's five years old. I've lived in this community for 50 years, and it's been a struggle to live here. But I love Revelstoke so much that I've stayed, and I continue my struggle. And, Council, we're working outwards of this town. And when you're voting in, I think as elders, you have to make the right decision. And when I came to Revelstoke, Penny was about seven years old in Queen Victoria Hospital, where Cooper's in now. And it was torn down, and I went to work for the whole summer at that age and hardly worked for a penny of money. And that was kind of the start of my being an entrepreneur in Revelstoke. And at the end of summer, I realized I didn't make much money. And the developers and the people that had done the construction sold those bricks for a dollar a brick. And so you can imagine the money I made from my penny to a dollar. So it was that time that I realized I wanted to work for myself, and I didn't want to work for the man. I wanted to be the man. So, and I know a lot of people in Revelstoke feel that way. And I know a lot of you have started Revelstoke from a young age.
Yeah, thanks for being.
And we relate to you. A lot of people in Revelstoke are owner-operated businesses, and that's how they've survived in Revelstoke, is owner-operated. And they put a lot of time and effort into bringing up their families here and had struggles to be here and to have those owner-operated businesses. And so I don't want you to lose sight of that's where you've come from, and that's where a lot of people still are. And I think there's a lot of young people coming to the community that need that opportunity. And we don't want the dollar to go to the man. We want it to be to the young people that are coming to this town. And the polarization that's gone on with the community, I think within your hearts, that should tell you that this is not the right development or the right place for it. And I think there's lots of opportunities. If you listen to the message, people in business are saying, "We want development, but we want to have it downtown. We want to have it that makes sense to this community." If you go back to Mayor Tony Coffin, former Mayor Tony, and if you remember, many councils and since I was here, the community has always been about spending money to drag people off the highway and to help this town and help the people in it. And this is not the right idea. I'm going to rephrase about my 50 years in Revelstoke as being. And thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kai Vogel. I am a high school teacher here in town, and I very proudly grew up in Revelstoke. And I want to say at the start that I am opposed to the development, this particular development. And I want to say that it is clear, hearing everybody speak tonight, the arguments against this particular development, they're well set, and there's a lot of data backing them up. So I don't feel that I need to emphasize any of that anymore. What I do want to say is the reason that I love Revelstoke, the reason that I moved back here after university, the reason that I own a house here, the reason that I'm raising my family here, is because Revelstoke is different. And the reason why most of you are probably in this room or keen to be in Revelstoke is because you realize that too. Revelstoke is a community. And that has always stood out to me in the various places I've lived, that Revelstoke is different because it is a community. And we need to make sure that we are not losing sight of that. The economics of all of this are important, but only insofar as they serve the community. And we need to make sure councillors and Mr. Merritt, as you consider this decision again, that the primary objective is to do what's best for the people, because that is what the community is. Bottom line, it's these people in this room. And from the perspective of the developer, I understand they're coming from outside. They may not see that Revelstoke is different for these reasons. But that is why we have an official community plan to make that vision clear. And as has been said before, there's lots of great ideas for development. It's not about being anti-development. It's about development that is for the purpose of the community. So yes, thank you all very much for your time.
Nadine Cowan and then Sean Adeline.
Can anybody hear me?
Hello.
Close again.
I've heard many people speak, and speak very well tonight, and on his regard to Mr. Battisby's comments, that's a 30-year-old study. That's a 30-year-old report. It's not that relevant to today. Elmer, pardon me. Elmer, you spoke very well about today's shopper is not the same. They are not looking for a retail brick-and-mortar store. I've heard downtown retail core is fighting that problem of the online shopping. As any people that work at our post office, there are folks coming into this town through the online shopping market and it is hurting our downtown core. I also heard people speak, "Let's develop the downtown core." Sure. Let's get on that community law. It's been vacant and empty and cleared for 25 years or so, maybe a little bit less. I've been here for 26. My rights go from this company to this community for over eight years. If we are to develop the downtown core, we need to either clear some lands. Can't do it. We have heritage by law. We cannot touch any of those buildings in the downtown core. So we want to bring in a grocery store as an example, or a grocery store. We need something larger than a boucher, wonderful product, not affordable for the average family, or for Revelstoke's income. The Revelstoke Credit Union did a study called the Living Wage Study. They calculated to work in Revelstoke, you need to earn 16.67 an hour just to get by. How many people in this room earn that or more per hour? Alexia Shaw knows. 16.67 is a living wage for Revelstoke. How many people in this room earn that much and more per hour?
Currently, I do not.
Currently, you do not. You are voting in for a lower wage job. Way to go, you are. So putting this development up on the highway, it might look great for a little while, but it won't last. I am for development. After listening to everybody here tonight, I don't think this is the right one. I do realize that this is fast. Due to the lighting being with the 800 meters of the Channel Access Highway, the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure gets to have their say. We already have a problem just west of that intersection of the proposed new development. Yes, there is a wonderful traffic signal section that was built there. I do not think it is good enough to sustain the proposed traffic that will come on that bridge road and be an off-subway, which most people forget in town unless you're a tourist traveling through, because it's nowhere near anything else. That's all I have to say. Could you allow counsel to learn?
Thank you. Sean Adeline and then Tony Morbino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep it close. I know this has passed events at night for sure. So we've had a couple of conversations on Fridays, and one of the questions that I wanted to just ask was a straightforward question about our 111 rate here in Revelstoke. Have we done any research as to what our unemployment rate is in Revelstoke, where we're at with it, and could we actually sustain having these supposed 200 jobs? And the discussion about the fact that they would be roping jobs, minimum wage. Have we done any research as to where we're going to put these alleged people coming from other markets to come scoop up these great jobs? So the question is really about, not about emotions, have we done any statistics on this at all?
I would say no.
Thank you for being honest.
Good job. All right, Tony, you're up. Tony Morbino and then Kurt Punt. Tony Morbiel, and then Kurt Punt.
How do I go here, council?
It's close to you, I'll just pause in front.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
First time I ever spoke publicly at a meeting of this, so just carry with me. I hadn't planned to speak, but I just want to say that I arrived in Revelstoke in 1952 on a steam engine. And I witnessed a transition to a diesel locomotive in 1954. And, I mean, during that time, it's over 62 years, and I have seen very little development in this town. In fact, I looked at the census for the population in 1931, and Sabanar was still a district, and their population was 1,676. Revelstoke had a population of over 2,700. In the 2011 census, Revelstoke was at, I believe, 7,300, give or take. Sabanar, 17,000. Now, I mean, the math speaks for itself. Sabanar has all kinds of big-box stores and strip malls, and lots of room for expansion. But Revelstoke is just a tiny area on the highway. This is not a big development. And as for the wages, even the low wages, that minimum wage, that $10.28 an hour, that's still over $4.5 million a year that's in this community, because low-wage earners aren't able to travel downtown to shop.